This is the October 2nd, 2024 meeting of the Krishnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. Our first item of business on the agenda today is the secretary's report from August 13th. Does anybody have any clarifications to those minutes or questions? No? All right. Anybody for a second? So, come on. All in favor? Aye. Next on the agenda is the budget. No worries. Come on in, we just started. No problem.
All right, so we just wrapped up this quarter of the new fiscal year. We are on a very tight track for our salaries line, so for the director and patron services supervisor. We are, there's not much wiggle room there. As for the library technicians and the children's room assistant, we are almost at 18% spent. There are coming holidays, so Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. There are some technicians who get their holiday pay, so that will jump up a little bit. I'm going to try to see if we can have a staff meeting either at the end of the year or the beginning of 2025. And then as for our operating line, I haven't received September's energy bill, but August and July's are there, and we're at 10%, so we're pretty good. But these are our low months for using energy. The telephone line, we are getting more use out of our fax machine. So our bills have been slightly higher. I think we might run into a problem a few months from now, but the solution for that will be to use state aid to pay those bills. And then coming in budget season FY '26, we have to bump that up because of the usage of our fax machine. I think because it's newer and it sends faxes, super faxes.
That's good.
Yes, it's fantastic, and it's been working out really well. Material line, we are a little bit under 23% spent. I have a few more invoices to process than those we did process on Friday, but I will need to spend a little bit more aggressively because I want to make sure that is spent out before the end of FY '25. Any questions regarding the budget currently?
I don't have anything, looks good. Anybody else?
Nope.
No? Do you get a motion?
I'm trying to switch up the blender.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have old business. We have the update on the portico.
Our favorite topic, the portico. I am now in contact with Seth Deroche from the Deroche Construction Company. John gave Seth my phone number two weeks ago. Seth and Dan from the DPW came to the library to look at the portico downstairs. So they were downstairs, they came back up, and Seth said that we need to actually put some type of roofing on it, so it's not complete. So I told him, okay, let's get this done. When do you want to do it? He was like, well, my day starts at 7:15. I'm like, okay, I will be here to open the building to make sure you could come in and work on that. So I gave him my phone number, I haven't heard back yet. So unfortunately, I didn't get his cell phone number. So yesterday, I reached out to John so that I could get Seth's phone number, and I contacted him today. We want this portico up before Halloween, so if there's anything that we can do to expedite this, I am waiting on a response back from Seth to see what can be done. In the meantime, it's still an eye sore.
It's still my time.
And hopefully, I will get a response when I get back to my office after this meeting. And that's all I really have to say about that right now. Unfortunately, I will be away for on vacation, so towards the end of October. If this needs to be done, I might have to either ask Rick to come in earlier or figure something out, but it needs to be done. So that's where we stand with the portico right now. Any questions about the portico?
Do you have any questions, comments? Hopefully, you'll respond quickly at this time.
Yes.
Fortunately, putting a roof in, then it won't be a problem. I assume they'll just put some rubber roof on it.
That's what I'm assuming, I mean, I don't know what I'm looking at when I go down there, but probably just like rolled, what they put on before they put shingles, I'm assuming?
Well, they would do that, but they may actually, he'll probably put a piece of rubber roof on it. And probably his biggest problem is finding a spare piece.
Yes. And then, so you know, Dan was, when they were up, they came, they were outside, they were measuring, so they're...
Ready to do it.
They're ready to do it. You know, they were both were here, so the DPW has the heavy equipment. It's just it kind of went flat all of a sudden, and I was so excited. But we'll see, trying to light a little fire.
Yes, I would just continue to follow up just every other day or whatever until we can get a response. At this point, this week, we're against the grease.
Yes, and it's, you know, it's a colder and...
Okay. And the next item is the update regarding the flower beds.
So our flower beds have been an ongoing issue on our soul in eyesore. I received a message from the town administration's assistant about a women's group from UBAFED called Steppenstoss that they were interested in doing projects around the town. So I was like, fantastic, they can definitely come here, they have their own equipment. And then the conversation went flat. So I reached out again, the issue was they don't have transportation. So Lauren from the Council on Aging was going to use, or tried to use their van to bring them over to the town properties. And that's where it ended. I haven't heard anything, I don't know where, when this is going to happen, I don't know what the holdup is. But in the meantime, the ground has been very, very soft, and I've been pulling my shoes. So I, you know, I think it's fantastic that this group is reaching out and looking, and they have their own equipment. And then in a side conversation that I had with the new maintenance foreman Matt, he said that he would also help when they came. But I haven't heard back from them yet, so... Yes. So that's where we are with the flower beds.
Okay. Anyone have any comments or questions, concerns on the flower beds?
I need to hear, you get the council aging vehicles, bringing people over.
Yes, and they're in UBAFED. I don't know exactly where they're looking, but you know, it's not too far. I just, maybe they need permission, I don't know what the holdup is, but I need to reach out back to, I need to reach out to Lauren to see what's going on.
I know Lauren just looked, but she's dressed and so even gets some stuff. She said it's gonna happen.
Yep, and just, I mean, maybe the vehicle's being used for the daily programs at the council and aging, I don't know.
Are they doing flower projects in the rest of town?
They, I think they are, I just don't know which bill. I think the council aging was one of them, and then us, and I don't know where else. So it was, but she said that she knew the library was urgent, so that they would come here first. And I'm like, I really appreciate it.
Yes, that's interesting, because I think the council has been done by the...
And I don't think they've been...
I think so too.
Doing it.
And slide out.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it would be good if we could get on some sort of schedule.
Yes.
Like, will they come once a month or whatever?
But, you know...
I mean, now, now, once they do it, once they do it now, we don't need that.
I mean, we have months there right now, and I'm just pulling the dead things, and it's just the crack rat.
And your spare time, yeah.
You know what the dead things are that you're pulling.
What's that, right?
Let's just say I came in the other day with a, I'm like, Leslie, what is this? She's like, that's a bulb. So I'm like, put it back for it, it's just dead, that's why I did it.
Oh, okay.
That's the thing.
I think we need to follow, we need to follow up with the rest about that before we end up with no flowers on there.
The bulbs are there.
Yeah.
The bulbs are there.
Elizabeth, this is how you learn.
I mean, there are things that I know are dead and just caught and so forth, but it's the whole...
You didn't know when you accepted this job that you would be a gardener?
No, no, add that to the many, many of the hats they wear. All right.
Okay. All right, on to new business, outdoor signage.
Okay, so this is our big topic of this meeting. So I know I mentioned this a few times, but our sign and our street sign. So our sign is the sign that is on the driveway right by the book drop. So I reached out to a couple of different companies, sign companies. So the only one who reached back to me was Point Signs. I met with Bethany from Point Signs, and I expressed what I wanted, which is just a replacement for the ours on that sign that's over there. So this is where it gets a little bit complicated. So with the ours sign, it takes a little bit longer for them to design, to show me different drafts. They will be using the posts that are there. So it's just the actual sign that's on the post that will be replaced. So when I have an idea of pricing, idea of what it's gonna look like, I will be reaching out to the friends group who have expressed interest in purchasing the replacement.
Great.
I think we don't have to, I don't know if we have to vote on saying yes, this can happen, or we can just wait until I know more information about the ours sign. The other sign is in dire need of fixing. So I also brought Bethany over to the street sign that has been cracked since we might have moved here. The ours sign, the street sign is also off of one of the posts. I do not know that. So I explained, I was talking to Bethany, I don't know anything about signs. So she said that she believes that the two columns are hollow, that there might not be wood in them. So if you look at the side, it's leaning like this. The left corner is not even nailed into the, or screwed into the column. So I asked, could she put a quote in for me of having this resetted, have the sign taken down, put back up, have the column spec? That would be quicker to get a quote than the ours sign. I, she, I got the impression that it looks like it's going to fall at any second. She was like, this doesn't look good. I mean, I'm not looking at the ours, at the street sign often, so I want to have that fixed before it gets damaged even more. So the crack in it is now on both sides. To fix the crack, it would be a lot more work. They would have to physically take the sign, match the sign, but if they could just replace the post, send it again, it would prevent the crack from even going further. Because the, I've only mentioned the ours sign to the friends, I don't think I, I don't know if I should ask for, have both fixed, or have funds from the friends for both. Because this one is urgent, and it might be done sooner than later, the winter coming up, I wanted to actually use state aid to fix it. The problem is, I don't have an estimate of how much it is to fix. So I was thinking of either having a up to amount, and then if it goes over, I would use the building fund. Because once this happened, once this, you know, because we meet once a month, I'd rather have permission to do it before it gets...
Delayed for another meeting.
Exactly, right. So I don't know how to actually go about. The ours sign is fine, that is, you know, that is, it's just an eye sore. But that sign, if that sign falls, if it cracks even more, the person who created it, I don't think does it anymore. That, if that goes, that's gonna be a bigger issue of replacing. So I want to have it at least fixed so that it stays there for another 20 years or so. But I just don't know estimate wise how much it will cost to reset it. And I know I mentioned the, as a project for the previous maintenance, but it was, it was too low down. Yeah, and it might be too much work because it is heavy, and you know, the ground is so soft, and she doesn't even know if those columns are in cement. She doesn't know if there's wood. The way the sign is, there is just one nail going through both as opposed to having two, so I don't know why that's like that. Even me, I don't know anything about construction, but this doesn't seem right, and that's why it's lifting. And all it's gonna take is one gust of wind or one, you know, little hurricane or tropical storm that could just fly off or fall off.
Have you reached out to John about this? Because John's, and his kids from school actually put that sign up.
John Roy?
Yeah.
I haven't, no.
So he would know more as far as how it was put in? That, but the bottom line, it's gotta be fixed.
It's gotta be fixed. And, you know, I'm at the point where I don't wanna rely on people to have emergency things done, like to have urgent things, you know?
But taking into your question.
Especially about the cement, or if there's a mess there or...
And if you go there, the ground is so soft, and you know, there's mulch, dirt, and bushes around, but it's so soft, and you can just go like this, and it's like... And I know, you know, back when I was part-time, 2017, that sign was already cracked, and it had a crack, and I've already, and I know it's gone further and further, and all of a sudden, it's really leaning. So I want to get that fixed, because if it does fall, if it does break, they were gonna look at thousands, or tens of thousands to get a new sign, you know? So if it at least can be reset sturdy enough to survive, you know, our winters and our hot summers and the wind tunnel that surrounds this building, I would...
Did they give you any timeframe as to when they could get a quote or...
The quote for this, she said about maybe two weeks. The ours sign, it has to go through a design team and so forth, and that was probably a month or more. So I, this is what I was thinking, I was thinking the, maybe up to 5,000 from state aid, and then if it's more than 5,000, to use another 5,000 from the building fund. Or, yes.
If I could just ask, I don't know a lot about the state aid, I assume this is something that qualifies for you some state aid.
Yes, state aid I can use towards any of them, yes.
And do we, in general, during the year, use all of our state aid or?
No.
Okay.
No, we don't use it all. I use it to supplement for materials, programming, but state aid is what public libraries apply for every year.
Okay.
And we will, I just finished our application, but there is funds there. But it's, there's no restrictions on, I mean, you can't use it for salaries, but anything operating in buildings.
And then we have left over for the normal state aid things we do?
Yes, so when, I just finished the financial part, so they'll start awarding or looking at applications in December. So they do multiple rounds. So last year, we were on the second round, I think I found out in January for the first award, and then they do a second award in either March or April. I will say that the budget that the Massachusetts Library Board of Commissions, the government decided over $2 million for state aid to public libraries, so there's more than what they were asking for. I don't know if it means anything, but it's something that's a little bit common.
So my only question would be, wouldn't, would it be better to use the, take the full amount from the new library, which I assume is the building account that you were talking about?
Yes.
Would it be, would it be better to use, just use the money from that? Like, or as a whole, or...
Or you could budget more than the 5,000?
Right, that way if we can say, hey, listen, like, you know, we can up to a certain amount because we have to vote on a particular amount, but then it'll all be coming from one place? Or did you, did you really want to just take it out of state aid first and then...
I mean, the building fund, I know we have the portico still to come from.
Okay.
So, and I think that was up to 4,000.
Okay.
I'm not sure, you know, how long ago that was posted.
Was taking it out of the building fund ahead of any possible state aid, does that mean we forego that state aid? So in other words, once we do that, do we not get reimbursed for it? Like, oh, we did it, so we're not gonna give you the grant, I'm not saying a grant, something similar?
No, they, no, they don't, once they're awarded the money, they don't, they don't check to see.
Yep, right, we already have the state aid, so that's, that's our, you know, account for different things that we can't do within our budget. Okay, so we wanna do, so we want to say 5,000 from state aid, and then the rest from, up to how much more for the building? I mean, do we, what, do we wanna do? I mean, I can't see spending $10,000 to fix a sign, I know it would be...
No, I, like I said, I don't know.
If we're gonna spend $10,000, I think we get a brand new sign.
Neon sign. Like, I, like I said, I'm being very, very generous, yeah. I have honestly, I mean, labor, I would think would be a thousand or so, you know?
I mean, and I know why we're doing it, so that, you know, you can get the ball rolling before the next meeting, and I understand that, I mean, it's not that, is it not to exceed? I mean, it could come in at $1,200, it's, but we just don't know.
Now that I'm thinking about it, it does make more sense to use the building, and why am I trying to blame it on the name of the actual...
It's the new li, it's the money, the account for the new library.
Yes, which was used for the plumbing and so forth.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I think it actually makes more sense to use that for the building. So I think I want to switch my idea, my thought of using state aid. State aid can be a supplement to if, if, for whatever reason. Yes, because I can't use the building fund for materials.
Correct, that's true. I think that would just make a little bit more sense.
Someone can lend that account, just as a guess.
Which one, the building fund?
Still quite a bit.
It's still, yeah, I, I can't give you a number, I don't wanna say, but I don't know off the top of my head. Yes.
So really taking this money from it isn't gonna have a dramatic impact on that?
No, no, no. I mean, it was, I know when we moved here, it was, I think, over $200.
Okay.
But it's gone down since everything, but I don't know off the top, because I don't use it, I don't offer it at all. So, but I can get you that.
But since this is for, I mean, we've already, we've already voted to have the, spend up to $4,000 for the portico, so we have to obviously subtract that because,
Yes.
Subtract it, and that is there, but it's not there. And then if we, you know, we have to fix the sign, I mean, we have to fix the sign.
Yes, it needs to be done, and...
And I agree, I mean, repairing it, if we can repair it, I mean, you can't see the crack, if you don't know it's there, you can't see the crack from far away. I mean, I know it's there, so I see it all the time, but I, but I don't think anyone can really see it, so I don't think it's, it's...
And because it's leaning, it's cracking more, you know?
But I, but I don't think, and my point was, I don't think that if we repair it, that we're then gonna have to replace it. Like, I think it's, if we can repair it, I think it's gonna be good. Right, I think that, it's not like we're, okay, we need to fix it, so let's spend all this money to fix it, and then we have to replace it. Because that would seem, you might as well just take it down.
Yeah.
So, okay, so we'll, well, let's do, we wanna do, let's do up to $5,000 and then leave it at that. And then if it ends up being more, then you'll have to, we'll have to either call a special meeting or we can figure out what, you know, when we need to do that, so...
This is...
So make a motion that we appropriate $5,000 from the building fund for repairs to the main sign. Subject to Elizabeth's approval.
Not to exceed?
Yeah.
$5,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then nothing else on the signage, right?
No.
Okay, then we'll wait for the courts on the, on the ours sign.
Yeah, so on the friend's side, I assume to...
Yep.
They approve it by the friends.
Okay.
So, and that ours sign is not anything for change. It's actually in better stead, even though it's been taped over. And that's it, that came from the old library. Yes.
All right, so we have an update regarding the state aid.
So I completed the final part of state aid, which is a financial report. The only thing I really wanna highlight is, so in order to receive state aid, you have to spend, to receive 100% of state aid, you have to spend 16% of material, of your budget on materials. So our 16% was $47,824, and I spent $52,951. So I went over, there was a little bit of panic when I realized that I was really below the 16% spent, but I did. And that's it for state aid. Once this gets signed, I will submit it, and then we will wait to see what happens after that, how much, you know, can we get awarded and so forth.
What did we get awarded last year for state aid? I'm sorry, maybe I shouldn't.
No, no. I know.
Being new, I'm trying to catch up on it.
So it comes out in two different times, they do rounds. So it's usually December, and then again in either March or April. So if I don't...
The first...
So this year, we received $29,782.
Wow, that's great.
Yes. Yep. And it's always, and it's been increased. So the previous year, so we received $27,480. So it is fantastic, and one of the numbers that helps us with this is we are a library on a bordering town and city, so we have a lot of out-of-town residents and they call it. But that's just the tiny, tiny thing of it, but, yes, so this is very time-consuming, but it's done, and we will wait and see.
Great.
Moving on to the directors' report.
All right, so directors' report.
Before we get to the directors' report, if you don't mind, on new business in, it was gonna be in our... Before we get to the director's report, if you don't mind, um, new business in, it was gonna be in our, uh, last month's meeting, the curriculum policy had been listed on that, I don't know.
Oh, yes, yep.
I, um, I scratched that, um, I still need to go over it with staff and everything about it.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's nothing urgent, not at all, not at all. Alright, so very quickly on our statistics, so I, obviously I don't have, um, September statistics. Um, so very quickly, in August, uh, we had an increase in YA circulation, which is, I think, might be the first time that has happened. Um, also DVD circulation went up, um, and I think that's due in part of I've been ordering, uh, more DVD titles. Um, and our e-resources, our audiobooks are extremely high, everything went up. Um, even ebooks, and I've been purchasing very aggressively for, um, new books. Um, so some books I've been purchasing two titles for and for audiobooks, the holds list is, is in the hundreds and I've just been for purchasing those because people are using it. Um, and that purchase, um, does count for materials when I do state aid next year. Um, our highly, highly, highest daily circ was a Monday, August fifth, with a hundred and eighty-five items and there was no programming that day, it was just a regular Monday. Um, and I think that's it for our s, the statistics for August. Um, for the director's report, I have, we have added a additional storytime, so it's a cozy storytime that's at Tuesdays at six P M. Um, and Lori has been absolutely wonderful, um, we've had quite a few programs, um, some fresh ideas here. Um, I, as for administrative things, I've started applying for local cultural grants. I will have, um, those completed before, um, October fifteenth. Um, so we'll see, um, last year we were awarded two thousand from the Krishnan Cultural, cultural free child. We were awarded two fifty, Rochester three hundred dollars, and I'm going to apply again and I'm going to, um, maybe expand a little bit further. There's no harm in applying, so, the worst thing they could say is no.
Mm-hmm.
And those we use for our summer conscious series and, um, uh, for some, uh, additional summer programming. Um, I met with new teachers here, uh, from the Krishnan Public Schools and gave a tour of the library, uh, explained some of our resources, they also met Lori, who is a former teacher, so, um, it was good to see new faces here. And, um, some of the teachers have been back for borrowing, so it's been really good that, um, they're thinking of us and, um, and, you know, working, we'll be working with them for, um, or throughout the school year. Um, so I met with Matt, the new maintenance foreman, um, to discuss some of the projects that were on Dave's list. Um, so one of the, the decks, the shaking of the pole, the handrail is one of the projects that's, was listed. Uh, one of the floorboards is lifted, so D, uh, Matt is aware of it. Um, some minor things, Matt fixed our flagpole that was broken since February. Um, he also removes the, when we have overflow of the boy scout flags, he takes them, well, Dave was taking them to the council on aging and now Matt is aware of it and then he took it over. Um, so I'm just trying to keep him in the loop of, of things that were happening when it could be done. Um, and then I also met with the town administrator, um, to discuss, um, or to, to remind that our snow removal, um, plan that we had, um, last year. Um, so that it should be fresh in everyone's mind at, at town hall, um, and let's see, I am, this just happened this morning, I will be meeting with the town administrator next week to discuss F Y twenty-six. So I will be sending an email to the, um, the budget committee, um, just to ask questions or, or, no, I'm not throwing numbers yet, um, just to, to get an idea of, of what can, what can be discussed or what I missed this time. Um, and then another thing that I did write on here was, uh, so over the summer, I had a patron or a content goer who was like, I did that concrete walkway out front, I'm like, oh, cool. He's like, that needs to be sealed. I'm like, okay, so then I will do it for free, labor, you just have to pay for the equipment, for the supplies. So, okay, so I reached out, um, unfortunately, um, it's too late to have it sealed. And then also I thought like, wait, it's, it's gonna need heavy equipment to put the portico up, so maybe it's a good idea that we, you know, it wasn't done now. Uh, but, that being said, come April or May, I'll be reaching out again, uh, to this patron to have that sealed correctly, he said. So he's the one that actually did it. Um, but that will be something coming up in the spring and, um, we will have to use, um, some building materials, uh, funding for it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it shouldn't be more than, it shouldn't say things, cause I.
Right.
Yeah, no, but it, it, you know, it, it takes like thirty minutes, he said, to do and he said, I'm doing it on a Sunday, you know, you know.
Okay.
So, but that's something to, um, I have to keep on every yard, so when the spring comes and when the portico's up, we will, um, be all nice and shiny and you will front. Alright, and that's my director's report. Any questions about the director's report?
No questions. Right, here. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Uh, I have the next meeting, can everyone do Tuesday, November twelfth at twelve-thirty, except for Steve? Can you, can you, are you back?
Oh, yeah.
From me, are you sure?
Well, we have a drop dead date of being back by the fifth.
Alright, so you're good, so, and that Tuesday, it's a Tuesday at twelve-thirty, that works?
And I'll do my best. On time of your brain level.
We can, we can give you a reminder, be like, that's fine.
No, you, you send reminders.
Well, that works for everyone, okay. Then our next meeting is gonna be Tuesday, November twelfth at twelve-thirty. Um, we don't have any other business, just a motion.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This October second, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Krishnan Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is one oh two.